Would you please join me for the pledge? Is this on?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for being here. We'll call the Monday, May 19th, 2025's regular board meeting of the Southwestern City Schools to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskinney.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Boso.
Uh, here. Moving on, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the agenda for the May 19th, 2025 School Board Meeting. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a second?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Any additions or corrections to that? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinney.
Yes.
Mr. Boso.
Uh, yes. Uh, moving on, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the meeting minutes for the April 28th, 2025 School Board Meeting. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Second?
Second, Liskinney.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskinney. Any additions or corrections? Or corrections, I should say. Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinney.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Boso.
Uh, yes. Um, before we start the meeting, um, I'd like to, um, make some comments on what has been going on in our district. Discussions on the Board Professional Development Groups that we have joined, there has been a lot of negative and misleading comments about the Board pushing English-only education, segregating classrooms. Um, as far as the, um, English-only comments, this district, um, when I go to look at our curriculum, it is an English-only. We have our EL students that we push to learn English. Mr. Kennedy does a great job to get them kids so they're proficient at English. So as far as being English-only, we do push English-only, but we have other materials to teach English learners to learn English. Um, as far as the segregating classrooms, we separate kids depending on what is best for that student. I mean, we have general classrooms, cross-cat classrooms, stack units, behavioral-focused classroom, strive classrooms, low incident classrooms, and many others. Um, so despite all the hysteria pushed certain people by certain people, nothing has really changed with the way this district has been operating normally for a long time. To address our membership in the National School Board Leadership Council and other groups, I think it'd be a disservice not to join other groups and get a difference of opinion. I mean, having a diverse opinion is healthy. The district is a hundred-
Nothing's changing. Why are we joining-
The district is 119 square miles. There's many different people in this district with many different ideas and opinions on issues. It would be unwise not having a constructive conversation about what is best for our students and going to be the best practice. We know there are many good things. It's sad in this district that we're doing. This district is doing great things, but a lot of people aren't hearing about them from all the noise that you hear in the news, the newspapers. I'm proud of what this district's doing. I, I, it, the only thing that these, these arguments are hurting our district. What's going on in the State House with our budget and our finances? It's, it's, it's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of people watching in our community. And if our finances don't go the way they should, we're gonna be going for a levy. And the people in this community are gonna hear all this going on, and they're not gonna vote to go for a levy. And the only people it's gonna hurt are the people that are employed by this district, but mostly it's gonna hurt the students in this district. So, moving on now, with all that said, we're gonna move on to a couple presentations and go on with the regular board agenda. Um, I will open it up if any other members would like to say anything. You're more than welcome. All right, seeing nothing on that. Our first presentation, we'll have three presentations this evening. The first will spotlight our schools at East Franklin Elementary School with, um, Lon, um, Don Lowenstein. Did I say it? Lowenstein? Dr. Al, sorry.
Good evening, President Boso, Vice President D'Angelo Steele, Board of Education Members, Mr. Banks, Mr. Garseid. I'm Dr. Don Lordson, and it's my true privilege and honor to stand before you today and talk about the journey that East Franklin Elementary School has taken in this past year. We met in August of last year to talk about what was our goal? What did we want to be known for? What was the grocery store conversation in the checkout line? We wanted to be known for three things. Academics, that was reading, writing, and math. Attendance, if children are not there, they cannot learn and we cannot teach them. And parent and family engagement, they are our most important partners in doing this work. So we started with literacy, not just reading and not just writing, but that true partnership of literacy and writing and reading together. We wanted our children to be writers. We inspired them to be writers. By being writers, they applied all the things they were learning in their phonics lessons and their literacy lessons, and we taught them, and it carries over to reading. Our kindergartners are writing five pages on topic with capitals and periods, and I challenge a non educator to read it because you can. We're creating writers that have a message, have a story, they're proud to tell it, and it looks the same in all of our classrooms. When you look at our math instruction, vocabulary is key. Math vocabulary is its own language, and I imagine all the people behind me in the red shirts would echo that sentiment. We know children have to know the vocabulary before they can use the vocabulary. They have to be able to talk about it before they can write about it. We've worked very hard to have our kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth grade teachers all sit at the table together, so our kindergarten team can use those words that they're gonna hear in first grade, in second grade, in third grade. So it's not new learning, it's more learning of the same. We know to do this important work, teachers have to have professional development. They have to have the time to say, what do I need to help my children? And they need to look at that data, what do my children need moving forward? Our team spent time together, giving up half-days, giving after-school time to really look at, what are we doing? Are we doing what's best for our children? And how do we adjust accordingly? We already have a plan in place for next school year, so that all of our staff meetings, TBTs, professional development is one embedded process, not a one-and-done. The other thing we are very proud of is attendance. We got them here. We improved our attendance by over 1%, which might sound insignificant in some avenues and some arenas, but we all know how huge that is. It is hard to get a five-year-old to come to school someday, but we did, and we are very, very proud of that. That's only part of our journey. Parent engagement and opportunities for children was the next part. Partnerships. We brought in Second and Seven, not just for the once-a-year reading and partnership with Janet Kassoff and her team at Second and Seven, but because of our partnership, we have athletes from Franklin Heights High School coming over once a month. The powerful thing about that is little people can see themselves in these student athletes. Those athletes deliver the message, you have to be in school, you have to love reading, you have to try even when it's hard. It's amazing to hear from those athletes when they run into those children at Kroger or Walmart, and they hug them and they say, I know you, you made a difference. Who benefits more, the little people or the big people? I don't know. Both. We also partner with the Children's Hunger Alliance. We're very proud of the fact that every child has access to food one day a week. We wanna take care of those food insecurities. When children feel good at school, they can learn. We have to meet their basic needs, so we're very grateful for that partnership. We also partnered with King Thompson Realty. Every child got a coat going into winter, a brand-new coat. That's important when you come to school in the cold and don't have one. Engagement with families was huge. We need our families to come in, not just for parent-teacher conferences, but we need them to come in for everything. We started Eagle Assemblies this year, so we have quarterly assemblies recognizing perfect attendance, art, music, PE, and our house winners. We have a house system, so we recognize all of those students. Every parent, caregiver, guardian of a child receiving an award got a personal phone call. Your child is receiving this award, please keep it a secret. There is nothing that makes your heart prouder for a five-year-old to walk into the gym and they see mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, and every aunt and uncle that could get the day off from work. It reminds us all why we do this work. We also brought families in for Day in the Life. We started the school with experience your child's life for about an hour and a half. They sat on the floor and were read to by teachers. Now parents understand what it means to be a first grader, a second grader at East Franklin. We've got parent-teacher conferences, trunk-or-treat, holiday spectacular, spring carnival, multicultural night. Spring carnival's this Friday, 5 to 7. If anyone has time, please come. The other thing we did after all of those events is families were given a survey. What are we doing right? What can we do better? We have our perspective, we know what we think families want, but we need to hear from them. The other thing is we have opportunities and supports for students. We started Student Council this year. We have our Eagle News Network, so we have video announcements led by three student anchors every morning. We have OSU College Mentors, so every Tuesday we had 26 students go to Ohio State University to experience college life. Every Tuesday was, I'm going to college today. Yes, yes, you are. For some, that will be the inspiration that they need moving forward. We have our Franklin Heights student athletes coming over once a month. We also have them coming over to support us with Field Day the end of this month. We have help, students help with our weekly food distribution. We have our Care Closet, we have our Giving Tree, we have our Care Team. We have our Let Me Run inaugural program, where our communities and school site coordinator had 18 boys participate in Let Me Run. And then, as you all know, we have the Courage Hotline, which inspires not just children, but adults all over the country. Those are the things that we felt were important to us, academics, attendance, and parent engagement. So to sum it up, who are we? We are about academics, we're about attendance, we're about parent-family engagement. We are four houses, we are one East Franklin, but we are all Eagles. Thank you for this opportunity to share our story.
Thank you so much, Don, and everything you're doing there. Anybody got any questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanna say kudos to you and your whole team. You're doing amazing things there. Um, just a note, um, for the folks in the audience, um, your reading proficiency, third-grade reading proficiency, went up 17 points from 2022 to 2023. And I was, before this evening, I was gonna ask you what the secret sauce was for that, but I think you just explained it, that it's all about teamwork and community engagement and inviting families to be a part of that, so-
And when you believe in children, they'll believe in themselves.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
East Franklin holds like a little, small, dear spot to me, so I will tell the, the community. And, uh, it was because before, um, I was involved in 20 other hats. Um, I was Ohio PTA District Advisor, so that meant I overseen a region of the state of Ohio. It could've been all, uh, Worthington City Schools, Hilliard, didn't matter what PTAs. And I chartered them. When East Franklin reopened, 'cause they were closed, and we kept the building, we reopened them when we were like, see, we need that more space. We reopened them in 2018, and, uh, I was hoping to get them chartered up and going. Matt DeCastro was there at that time. And so I have, he's, he's back there cheering. And so I helped their group over the course of years, and I've still stayed involved with them. And, um, they are so unique. They are small in numbers compared to the other buildings in the district, but man, I tell you, they are mighty. Um, and it has been, over the years, just great joy watching that building, um, grow and flourish and how they adapt. I love the fact they still have the old-school brick on the outside. When you go in, I tell people it's gonna look just like the others, but they just have such a great uniqueness. And their kids, they, when I'm, they wanna tell me everything. And they're like, no, she's gonna stand by me. And no, and then they wanna talk to me, and they wanna tell me all about their day. And so it's just been great, uh, watching that building go.
I ran into one of your students out on Friday when I was out doing pumping hydrants at work. His name was Jackson. It was, um, Moore's Dad's class or somebody. I think he said, I'm not positive, but they, him and his mom just raved about East Franklin.
It's a wonderful place to be. I'm a little biased, it's where I started my teaching career, but it's a wonderful place to be. I'm blessed for the opportunity. So thank you all again, thank you for letting me tell our story. Come see us anytime.
Come Friday, I'll be there working.
So bring your friends.
I'm bringing all family.
Anybody else can come.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Moving on now to our next presentation, it's the Board of Education Goal Update on Behavior and Human Resources with Mr. Doc, uh, Dr. Brian Bowser and Mr. Matt Jordan.
Good evening, President Boso, Vice President D'Angelo Steele, members of the Board, Mr. Banks and Mr. Garseid, and I get to follow Dr. Lordson with that great story. We're here tonight to just give a very brief update on some progress we've been making with the Board priorities. Next slide, please. Uh, tonight, we're gonna update you on the maintaining the integrity of the learning environment and human resources. So, next slide. So, since about spring break till now, here we are in early May, uh, each executive director met with each principal group, and each principal went back and engaged with each SSC, which in this district are leadership teams, that's what we call them. And we built conversations around here in the spring, what a great time to talk about maintaining the integrity of the learning environment. What's going on currently? What are your reflections around disrespect and distraction? And what does the data say? So this, executive directors are gonna update you on the stories that were told.
Good evening. Dan Gerard, I'm the Executive Director of Elementary Education, and, uh, I think Don has left, but I'm so proud of the work, Don, and all 16 of our elementary principals are doing and their staffs, so I wanna say that, working hard. Um, just wanna take a moment to share the conversations and collaboration that the principals are having around the four topics, distraction, disrespect, fighting violence and vandalism at the elementary level. We know and we recognize that we've got work to do and areas to improve upon, um, but I can tell you that our SSCs and our PBIS teams are working diligently to do that. And as our, the principal teams discussed these four areas, we came with one or two themes out of, uh, all four. Generally, in the elementary programs, those, those areas that we need to focus on are occurring around the non-structured times, hallway, um, behavior, bathrooms, recess times, students calling each other names, inappropriate language, some dysregulated behaviors. And we know that those are our areas, and in all four of those, um, areas, that's what, again, that's what our focus is on. Uh, we also understand that bus is a difficult time to and from school, and that's another area that we will be working towards, um, creating common language consistency across all 16 buildings, uh, with natural consequences, learning, a learning environment for kids, 'cause we know five-year-olds to 12-year-olds make mistakes, but they can't improve upon that unless they're taught. So there's a component of that learning embedded in that. And again, um, we're working diligently as a elementary principal team and our staffs to help, help classroom teachers and help kids learn and grow.
Good evening, Cheryl Spain, Executive Director of Middle Grades. Nice to see you. Um, I wanted to thank the Board for leading the process of cell phones. I really feel like, and I've said this before, that it's really made a difference to the middle grades, and the SSCs have been working really hard on this topic and many others. But what we've noticed is we're tweaking the building processes as we go, but we're trending in the right direction with that data. The disrespect, we do recognize that this is a problem, particularly peer-to-peer conversations and how people talk to each other in language and tone, so that is something. We've got some really good thinking in the SSCs for next year and some plans already. But, um, the fighting, and that's, yeah, fighting and violence, uh, that tends to move with different cohorts of students. We've seen it move grade to grade, but we're gonna keep working on that calibration in particular with the, the discipline. And then the vandalism really revolves around TikTok challenges, and particularly now we're seeing Chromebooks, as many of my friends are gonna note. Those small blips in vandalism can show great spikes in, in that data, particularly if there hasn't been any, but the TikTok has driven a lot of vandalism through the years here since COVID. Uh, one of the things we all agree on, though, is we need clear definitions and some consistent enforcement, so we'll keep working.
Hello, Eric Hui, Executive Director with the High Schools. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about everything that the others have talked about, um, starting with cell phones. Luckily, we're cured at the high schools, we don't have any more problems. So, um, I'm joking. We, we are very thankful that the Board is backing up the policy and helping us enforce that policy. We have noticed that distractions are significantly down, learning and engagement are improving. It is anecdotal, we're digging into the data to get more concrete evidence to show some correlation. So that is happening. We do know we still have some work to do, and we're gonna continue to make that a priority, enforce that policy. Disrespect, um, like Dr. Spain said, we look a lot trying to look at the difference between student-to-student language and student-to-adult language. And we really want students to understand that when you're talking to an adult, especially staff members or staff members that are coming in to help our staff members, um, that it's important to treat them respectfully. It is unacceptable, um, for our adults to be treated with disrespect, and we need to teach students how to do that properly, um, show, share respect. Um, our, our big phrase is choose better words when we hear them talking to each other in a way that is inappropriate, um, and we will continue to enforce that as well. Fighting violence is down across the board at the high schools. If you look at the data, if you listen to the stories, um, it was spiked in the fall, we think due to summer drama that bled over into our school year, down significantly in the spring. So we're gonna continue to pay attention to that when we start the school year next year, knowing that this is a trend that we can maybe, um, be proactive about. And vandalism, difficult to find those who are doing it, but when we do, we address it seriously and swiftly, and we try to keep our spaces free of any of the evidence of the vandalism fixed as quickly as possible. Um, that is a place that happens mostly during unstructured time, so we are looking to, um, double our efforts and, and making sure that we're present during those times in those areas. Thank you.
Next slide, Meredith. So what's next, as we all, um, are ready for a much-deserved break here? We will get underway, now that we've heard from everybody, at our administrative retreat in early August, planning some activities and planning around how to start the school year, to put SSCs and leadership teams in the right position to start the year off on the right foot. So with that, any quick questions before we transition to HR?
I just, I just wanna mention something. Um, back when we did, um, our survey last year, um, the top five improvements, discipline and student behavior, um, was number four for staff. It was number one for parents in the community, and it was number two for students. So I think that's very telling that our students are concerned just as much as the parents are about these issues going on. So I'm excited to hear, um, what you come up with at your retreat and to hear back in the fall.
Hope to see you there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, how you doing? Gotta follow Don, gotta follow these guys. Like, this is, this is great. So Human Resources Update, looking at the, uh, the three goals from the Board, was about recruitment, retention, is about looking at our data, and is about being, preparing our, our staff through onboarding processes for everybody. Uh, so the first slide, we, we kinda flopped it for you. We went ahead and went with data collection, uh, first, just kinda taking a look at things that we do. One of the things that we were talking about, and we do a video, and you can go online, and it's actually on a website that Evan put last year, why teachers actually came to Southwestern. Those who've been here, who've been raised here, who've taught, who went to school here, who wanted to come back and be part of this district, the diversity of this district, why they wanted to come in, we have a video online that shows you all that. But we wanna follow up this coming school year with the survey directly hitting the new folks who've joined us. So that is one of the things we're taking a look at. From a retention standpoint, and we've talked about this, we talked about it at our visioning session, talking about the exit survey, looking at how low the data was initially. I can tell you now, the data's a lot bigger, and once we get through the hiring season, we'll be happy to report out what we learned from that data as well. And that's why I said analyzing that. The recruitment happens all the time. That happens with all of us in this room, all of us in this community, everywhere that we go. Recruitment is a never-ending battle that we have to continue to do. Things that we look at is our face-to-face, um, our, Matt and Lori specifically go to job fairs all across the state, different hiring events, um, different colleges hold all those events that you know of. We also do our own. Matt went to Spree Career Fairs that focus on classified, and then we have a pretty good partnership with a lot of the local colleges where Lori actually gets to go on, and she actually speaks to college classes in regards to what Southwestern's all about. I know I have the privilege to go to Ohio State and speak to their honor society and talk to those kids every single year, which I love doing. Um, in terms of our, our media interactions, the thanks to Evan and his team, and really Vivian and our whole team when we post our jobs, but having direct geographic advertising, using that through Facebook to reach out to Northeast Ohio, Northwest Ohio, Southwest Ohio, Southeast Ohio, for folks looking for a change, wanna come to Central Ohio and come join our district. Um, obviously, social media, you see us on LinkedIn, Twitter, you see us everywhere, posting jobs. And then we reach out and talk to people all the time, through, over the phone, face-to-face, Google Meet. We're happy to tell our story, to tell your story, to anybody we look at to come join our team here in Southwestern. And obviously, the relationship building, it's who you know. It's all the folks you know, reaching out. Luckily, many of us have been around for a while, been in different parts of the state, being in Central Ohio, we get a lot of folks to come down here from all across the state, have friends and family in other places who are looking to move here, and as we know, Southwestern's a great place to live. Next slide. Uh, looking at preparedness for staff, kinda the onboarding, and I kinda jumped in and piggybacked off of a Dr. Lusher presentation with Inspire You from way back when, but our connection with Western Governors University, allowing our staff to attain credentials and become certified, hopefully become teachers, whatever they wanna do, having that connection to grow here. Grow your own, we've talked about this before, we're identifying staff, classified students, uh, who want to become teachers and who are applied for that through the chancellor's office. We have not found out yet how many folks accepted that or received that, $7,500 per year. And this year, we instituted the Military Incentive, which is done by the state of Ohio, which is $3,000, uh, to a military veteran who started work after July 1st of 2023. We've done that with two folks, and we talk about that with folks that we bring in at this point in time. Uh, onboarding enhancements, we'll be talking about this in August. Uh, this was definitely an issue for Mr. Banks when he hired me back last May and June, talking about this, looking at what do we do for administrators, are certified and classified. We made some minor adjustments this year, uh, but we'll lay, roll that plan out to you in August as things looking to do in '25, '26. Remember, you hire somebody new, you kinda take that first year to kinda see what's happening before you start instilling craziness. Okay, next one then, is just looking forward, uh, I tell you what, we are excited, look at what we're talking about, feedback we're getting from everybody, implementing those things for the '25, '26 school year. We'll take a look at all the data, make adjustments as necessary as the problems might be, and then look to report to you in August to kinda share where we are and share a lot of that data with you so you can see what we're seeing. Okay? Any questions?
Matt, this may have been stated somewhere or before, so excuse my brain. You lost. For our new hires.
Yes.
Do we, I know we probably check in with them after the year and see how things went for them, like in their first year with us.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that's the, the group I'm targeting. My question is, is do we do like a mid-year or court, like in the middle of their employment check-in survey to get feedback?
No, so all of our new, brand-new spanking teachers out of college are part of the rest of the program, and they are partnering up with the teacher who works with them all year long and their administrator. And then obviously, our teachers who are experienced, they come to us, obviously, with their collective teams within their building, but in actual, and that comes back to what we'll be looking to enhance for next year, is what does it look like in terms of your yearly check-in, monthly check-in on things we need to be focusing on about Southwestern? So-
Okay, I gotcha. So then they verbally are giving feedback?
Mm-hmm.
So there's no like survey?
Yeah, we don't have, one of the things on, it would've been a state survey, would've, is on that, is to go into next year, which is brought up, we talked about the vision session.
And I asked that question because, it's not that I might not like my mentor, I might love my mentor. They're great, right? But sometimes, something you might be thinking that you don't want to come off like, I'm being negative or something like that, but maybe great feedback that we don't know from a person, they may give that in a survey or anonymous, um, share for improvement, and we wanna make sure we don't miss that, because some people just are not gonna verbalize some people just are not going to verbalize that. And I'm just saying that from real work, you know, experience as a supervisor and my new case managers and just select things, like I just wanted to make sure that it was something where they're giving that feedback, but it may be something they might not wanted to necessarily share, but I'm like, tell me so we know how to improve. We want to know how our new teachers and staff are doing and things like that. So that's why I was thinking of an anonymous piece.
Yeah, I tried to do that so that people will know I'm talking about Dr. Lusher.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it's something that I mentioned at the visioning session and something that's a priority of mine, and that is hiring and focusing on folks with disabilities and just kind of where we are with that.
So we share all of our openings with them, and what we've talked with the Ohioans with disabilities is, you know, obviously, we want to hire anybody who can fulfill the needs we have in this district. We want to apply. They have our job descriptions, things we're putting out there and are walking their folks through on how to apply. And that's where we are with that. So, okay?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on now for our last presentation. It'll be our five-year forecast and budget for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 with Mr. Garsside.
President Boso, Vice President D'Angelo Steele, members of the board. Tonight, I'll update you on two items. The two items I'm going to discuss tonight are the five-year forecast that's required to be updated each, in May of each year, and our proposed budget for next school year, which is the '25, '26 school year. Go to the first slide, please. Thank you. As you can see, if you're looking at this chart, the black represents revenues, the gray represents expenditures, and the gold, it's not a pot of gold, but it is gold. That's our cash balance. And you can see, just by getting the visual from it, we are starting to, our expenditures are starting to outpace our revenues. We do have a positive cash balance. Our target is three to six months. That's where we like to be, right around three to six months of our operating expenditures as a cash balance. I'm going to talk about that a little bit more when I talk about the state budget, but we currently have from nine to two months cash balance if you go throughout the years. In fiscal year '26, we have a nine-month cash balance, but in '29, we only have a two-month balance. So that's a little bit lower than where we want to be. Important note again, expenditures are outpacing revenues in future years. So go to the next slide, please. Some of the numbers that derive these cash, this cash balance and the revenues and expenditures are, we do have, I do have a conservative approach on doing the forecast, try not to surprise you on anything, but you know, if I say we're going to have a certain amount of money, that it's not going to be much less than that. Hopefully, it'd always be a little bit more. So I do take a conservative approach to putting these numbers together. Overall, if you look at where the last, the forecast that was prepared in November to the forecast that I'm giving you now, the variance is under 1% on both the revenues and expenditures, so right on target. Revenues, I'm about a tenth of a percent different than what I projected, and expenditures about a half a percent different than I projected. So really close, on target with where we are. That's a good thing. That means you can count on the numbers that I'm putting into the forecast. It gets a little harder as you go out years. You know, next year's, this has probably been the most uneasy and unsure time I've ever had to put a forecast together. There's a lot of things that are going on at the state level that are really hard to predict. So what I'm telling you is, this year, we had pretty good numbers to go by. The numbers were good. As I move out in the future, I try to be conservative with those numbers so we don't get caught in a bad situation. The most significant change that was on this forecast from November to now, to May, I want to point out, that we did have an issue with personal property taxes from the utility companies. The numbers that, another treasurer myself, another county treasurer, we're looking at our numbers, they just didn't seem right. So the county, Franklin County Auditor provides numbers on values of our personal property that are utilities. The number that we were provided from the county wasn't the actual one that was used to collect taxes from those utility companies. So for us, it was about a million-dollar difference. That kind of makes up for that difference that we see in our overall bottom line where I was about a half percent off there. So another county treasurer and I kind of put our heads together, wasn't, it just didn't make sense when you did the math on it. So we asked a few more questions, dug a little deeper, and we found out that the numbers, the values that were given to us were not the actual numbers and the values that were used to calculate the tax bills that went to those utility companies. So in the future, we are going to sit down before those bills go out and talk with the county auditor and try to figure out what's going on there, but that's one thing that we found that was much different. Go ahead and move on to the next slide. So let's talk about our fiscal year '25, '26 budget. When you look at our forecast, it's the '26 column, so everything that comes off our forecast goes right into our budget, so you know right where those numbers are coming from. Here's where it gets a little bit interesting. On the revenue side, when the forecast was done in, back in November, there wasn't, there was a lot of talk on, at that time, a lot of talk around the school district treasurers and school district community that the Fair School Funding Plan would get its final phase in, and we budgeted for that. We looked at the five-year forecast, put the Fair School Funding Plan. We were still conservative with our estimates with that because it had been passed two times, last two biennial budgets had been passed through. So we thought we will get the Fair School Funding Plan funded, and we thought that there would be some differences and some increases to the base cost inputs. What we found is that that doesn't look like that's going to happen. So what that does, it has a negative effect. If you look at the November to the May forecast, you're going to see quite a difference in state funding in those lines. So I did not factor those into the forecast. On the expenditure side, you can look at our expenditures and our overall increase. Next year is a modest 2.26%. Obviously, inflation has been pretty high, but we have really looked at our expenditures, and we're trying to, you know, live within our means because we know that we're spending a little bit more than what our revenues are right now. So a 2.26% increase in overall expenditures. Staffing levels, we're keeping those maintained with adjustments. Obviously, we have, sometimes our special ed population has increased. We have to provide more intervention specialists. We are looking to add some more intervention specialists for next school year, so those are in the budget. We do have collective bargaining agreements that are expiring at the end of June of this year, so we're bargaining with all our groups right now, and those will produce some different numbers and maybe in the forecast. And another big thing, I'd say the biggest elephant in the room in the state, at the statehouse level, is there's currently a cash balance policy in House Bill 96 that talks about taking, allowing districts to only carry over 30% of cash at any time. Obviously, I said, we have more than that in our cash balances. And the reason why we have more than that, I spoke at the statehouse and basically pled our case, we're a district that hasn't passed a lot of levies. Our last levy was in 2009. Our community likes that we haven't been back to them for additional dollars, and we try to have some reserves that when financial hardship comes, we have that money set aside to weather those storms. So it's really a good, having a cash reserve is a good thing. They have not seen it that way, and they have talked about if, in our situation, it could be $100 million that they would take from our district, and then, and that would be, that would be very damaging. Coincidentally, there's a new financial health indicator that the state auditor put out, and it basically looks at your finances and shows you, if you're, if you're doing, doing the right things, you get these green bars. If you're doing the wrong things, you get red bars. So currently, in our, with this cash balance, we're mostly all in the green. We have a couple yellows, and that's because we're spending a little bit more than we're bringing in right now. If they take $100 million from us from our school district, we'll go red across the board. That'll be very quick. And that, that's something that, you know, we are getting the word out. I'm still going to be speaking to our legislators and trying to talk through this with them and really press the point that, hey, we're doing a good job. Please let us keep our cash balances, and you know, we can still provide a good education to our students. I will be bringing this final budget to you at the June 25th Board of Education meeting for fiscal year '25, '26 for your approval. But you can see, like I said, if you look at the column in '26, all the figures are there for what you're going to be given on the 25th of June. Let's go to the last slide real quick. I always like to talk about this. It gives us some comparison, because I can talk and all I want and say, hey, I think we're doing a great job financially, and without some data to look at to compare to, I think this really tells our story well. If you look at, the first column to the left is all millage. You have operating mills, some districts have permanent improvement levies, and they also have bond issues that they use to build buildings. That is every tax that is collected for each school district, all 16 school districts in Franklin County. I've put our number in gray, so this is ranked from highest to lowest. We are currently set at 15th in the, in the county as far as what we tax our property owners in our school district overall. That's, that's all taxpayer, all taxes, all tax type, permanent improvement, operating, and bond issue. If you look at the middle column, that is just operating levies. So these are just what we use to operate our schools. We are also 15th out of 16. We're currently at 20.83 mils. There's something called a 20-mil floor. We can't go below 20 mils. That's as far as we can go down. So we're close to the bottom there. I don't say that as a, it's not a proud thing to say necessarily, but it's just factual, just showing you where we are. When you're out in the community and you're talking to other taxpayers, you can show them this data and say, you know, we are not taxing, overtaxing our people in Franklin, in Southwestern City Schools. Next column to the right, that's the per pupil expenditure column, and this came from the 2024 CUP report, because that's the last fiscal year that was ended. So this is state data. This isn't my data. Southwestern City Schools spends 15, in 2024, spent $15,265 per student. Franklin County average is $16,311. If we multiplied the difference between those two numbers and multiplied it by our student, we would have about $37, $38 million more we would be spending per year. That's a pretty big number. If you look at the state average, we spend less than the state average. The state average is $16,311 per student. If you took just the state average, we would spend almost $22 million more overall per year. So this is a pretty quick and easy chart to look at, that you could, you could take off our website, show people. It's a good, it tells a good story, I believe, that we're doing a lot with the students that we have, a lot with the resources that we have, and we're always trying to do better. But these tell you the facts of where we are. If you, if you're at, I think if you're a legislator and you try to say that our school district's wasting money, I will pull out this document and say, hey, we're doing a lot with what we have. So that's all I have for the five-year forecast update and also the budget update. Does anybody have any questions?
I wanted to say again, thank you again, Mr. Garsside and Mr. Boso. I know you guys were down at the state house for maybe close to five hours through three minutes of speaking time, so I got to see that, and just want to say thank you again for spending half your day down there and advocating for us down here. So I appreciate that. And do you think if the, your paragraph in the beginning, do you think, is this similar? Would you know? Do you have any idea? Is this kind of what other districts look like? So like, do other districts, like is the goal to eventually, are your expenditures more than your income? Like, is that kind of how it goes, or?
So how school districts operate, for the most part, a lot of schools you'll see, and especially, well, a lot of districts have a levy cycle. They pass levies more often.
Like every three to five years?
Way more often than we do. And how that works is you collect a big amount at first, but as your expenditures start going up, that amount gets kind of sucked up into that. So we have not been on that same trend. We've really watched our expenditures and tried to mirror what we're doing as far as what we receive from the state and what we think we're going to receive from the state. So it is, it is common to see revenues outpace, or expenditures outpace revenues in future years.
Thank you. It's never fun to see, though.
Me too.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, you, as usual and always. Moving on now, we're going to go to board reports. Are any board reports? Seeing none, public participation related to agenda items. And we do have three people signed up this evening. The first will be Katie Stuckey as finance, financial forecast and funding.
This is way too high. Okay, first of all, I just wanted to say that President Boso, I'm glad that you brought up the issue of a levy, because that's part of what I'm here to speak about tonight. I'm Katie Stuckey. I am both a resident and a product of Southwestern City Schools. Actually, I'm a product of the levy era, as I like to call it, having narrowly escaped split sessions by one year, but still having to endure one failed levy after another. I'm here because when I was a student, I said that when I was old enough to vote, I would speak up for those who weren't. So I'm here for them. It was 2004, and there had been a crucial levy on the ballot, and it had failed. Adding insult to injury, there had also been a Columbus Zoo levy on the ballot at the same time. That one passed. Let me tell you how it felt to be a student in that situation, to how it felt to see people celebrating what came as a blow to my education, to be trying so hard to do everything asked of me, only to feel completely unsupported by my community. Even then, Ohio's school funding formula had been declared unconstitutional, and yet, in 20 years, no one has lifted a finger to fix it. The cost of funding schools was never supposed to fall on property owners, but with the state making drastic and irresponsible cuts, much like they are doing today, the districts are left with no choice but to appeal to voters. After that night, I got involved in the levy effort. It took two more attempts to pass a levy that year, and the rhetoric was awful. I had doors slammed in my face by adults who swore they would never vote for a levy. They blamed us, our teachers, our administrators. The only people they didn't blame were those legislators who had been complicit in the chronic underfunding of public education. I was lucky enough to graduate with honors that would not have been possible had my accelerated classes been cut as proposed by one budget. But the district continued to struggle financially for four more years before finally passing the most recent levy all the way back in 2009. When I became involved again as an adult, the first thing I mentioned to the board members I met was how it felt to be a student during those years. I made sure to tell them how deeply I appreciated the careful financial management that had kept us off the ballot longer than anticipated, and what a difference that was going to make to students. It was a point of pride for the district. I think we all hoped that someday, when we did eventually have to pass another levy, the community would remember this era of fiscal responsibility that had allowed us to avoid it for so long. That era ended two years ago. In that time, the board seems to have reversed course and squandered the good favor earned with the community. Board members claim that they are actually saving the district money, but refuse to point to where and how this is happening. Meanwhile, we know that this board has spent hundreds of thousands of additional dollars between hiring their own personal attorney, joining far-right fringe school board organizations, and turning a qualified superintendent into a political scapegoat. Now, when people eventually walk into that voting booth, that's what's going to be freshest in their minds, not the preceding 14 years of very careful financial management meant to avoid exactly that situation. This community will not pass a levy easily. If the voters don't trust the Board of Education, it will fail, there will be cuts, and those cuts will hurt. But they won't hurt you, and they won't hurt the legislators that cut our funding. They will hurt the kids, and I know exactly how they're going to feel, and it is awful. But it's not too late to change the narrative and become good stewards of public funds. In fact, it's your responsibility as public school members, board members. This means having a dedicated and active legislative liaison who contacts lawmakers regularly and pushes for the changes that our kids deserve and keeps the public apprised of new developments. It means supporting public funds for public schools. It means that the three or four of you who are currently being advised by the overpriced activist attorney need to find a way to do your jobs using the experienced legal representation that we already pay for. Waiting until the district is in dire straits and voting down a levy will hurt the kids. If it's this board that we seek to impact, November's school board election is our chance to do that.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on now to Amanda Goody to talk about rescinding policy.
Before my time starts, I just have one question. If I was going to talk about a couple different agenda items, do I have one five-minute block?
Just one five-minute block, sorry.
As an involved parent and community member, I feel it's so important that we, as a community, have an open and honest conversation about the recent policy decisions being proposed by this board, particularly the Parents' Bill of Rights and what it means for our children. At first glance, the inclusion of a parent's right to be informed about a student's request to identify his gender that doesn't align with their biological sex may seem reasonable. Parents should be involved in their children's lives. But when this policy is listed alongside concerns about academic performance, behavioral issues, bullying, and mental health crises, it sends a concerning message. The implication is clear. Gender identity is being treated as something negative, something that belongs in the same category as problems like mental illness or behavioral disorders. It's not just misleading, that is harmful. I want to remind the board that for many children, particularly those who may be questioning their gender identity, it may not be safe or appropriate to disclose that information to their parents. We have to acknowledge the reality that, for some children, revealing that to an unsupportive or hostile parent could place them at great risk. Schools should be a safe haven where children can learn, grow, and explore who they are without fear of retribution. Policies that force children to reveal this before they are ready create an unsafe environment. And that brings me to something else I found interesting, the fact that we have a Parents' Bill of Rights but nothing equivalent for students. Why do we center policies around what this board thinks parents want rather than what children need in order to thrive? We have a student code of conduct, student handbooks, and special permissions that we require from them, but I have yet to find a student bill of rights that addresses their needs, concerns, and protections. And that ties in neatly with the bigger picture here. The decisions that this board has made in recent months, including the ones we're discussing today, demonstrate a consistent pattern. This board is disconnected from the people it is meant to serve, the parents, the students, and the community. Looking back at the recent superintendent search is a great example. The firm hired, the firm that the board hired conducted a survey of seven key groups, including parents, students, staff members, and the board, to discover what everyone valued. The results were nearly identical across the group except for one group, the board. That discrepancy should raise red flags for everyone, and it should have been a red flag for the board. It should have been an opportunity for reflection and reassessment to understand where the disconnect lies. But instead of listening, we see a pattern of enacting policies no one asked for, policies that will have a negative impact on our children's well-being. The parents in this community are not asking for the board to make decisions based on culture wars or partisan politics. What we want is more opportunities for engagement. We want to be part of an open dialogue, like many other school boards, in our own city council. We want to ensure that our tax dollars are being used responsibly and that we are fighting for what this district truly needs, such as standing against voucher systems that take away from our public schools. We want a board that will ensure, we want our board to ensure classrooms are not segregated with special needs students or those with IEPs and 504s being treated as second class. We want a board that prioritizes fiscal responsibility and includes, ensures that every student, regardless of their needs, background, or identity, has the support and opportunities they deserve. We want a board that acts with integrity and transparency. Recent actions have raised serious questions about both here. When there's more time spent in closed-door executive sessions with a lawyer who has already been documented as meeting privately with several board members, lawyers also documented as saying, "The main value that lawyers provide is being able to give attorney-client privilege, and they can help guide a board outside of the public sphere." Actions that are questionable and illegal, how can we trust that the decisions being made are in the best interests of our children? Sorry, I'm almost done. And then, looking at the policies themselves, it's very telling to me to see which have been ended and which have been enacted. This board has chosen to focus on certain issues while ignoring others that would better serve our students, without telling us the most important thing, why? Why are we focusing on divisive policies that create harm when we should be focusing on real issues like teacher pay, improving student services, fostering a more inclusive, supportive environment for all students, and getting better results for everyone? At the end of the day, the board's role is to serve all students and families, not just those they personally agree with. This often requires being thoughtful, curious, and truly listening, not just to evoke a minority or those who echo your own thoughts back to you, but the community as a whole. I implore this board to reconsider policies that harm our children and instead take a step back. Listen to people who are impacted by your decisions, look at the immense amount of data we have available, and learn from actual education experts, and then move forward with a true desire for our community and our children to succeed. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Joshua, I think it's Burton, Joshua Burton, and he's talking about upcoming or overcomes of students first, I think it says, sorry.
Actually, you know what? I'll just ask you, I called in and signed up the other way, too. Didn't know if I had to sign up that way. Should I wait to talk? This is about?
Oh, you're here, too, Josh? Yeah, I'd just hold off.
Okay, I'll get you at the end, thanks.
If it's not agenda.
No, it's fine.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Either way.
All right, moving on now, we're going to go to student, staff, and achievement liaison with Ms. Liskney.
Thank you, President Bozo. It's great to be around the table this evening. Good to see everybody. This evening, under Board Education, student and staff achievement. Southwestern City Schools' student achievements. Want to say congratulations to Westland High School Corral for earning a superior one rating at the OMEA State Large Group Contest earlier this month. This top distinction reflects their hard work, talent, and dedication. Way to go Cougars. Congratulations to Southwestern Career Academy Pre-Nursing Senior Abdi Isay, want to get that right, who was recently named the recipient of the 2025 Spirit of Caring Award by Ohio Health Doctors Hospital. Abdi has completed over eight hundred hours in work-based learning as part of the hospital's float pool and has recently accepted a part-time position there following graduation. Also, congratulations to the Southwest Western Career Academy Interactive Media Design Team of Donatella Lopez, Fatuma Abshir, Nathalie Mohica, Marley Corona, for earning Best of Showcase honors in the BPA National Virtual Branding Team Competition. Their award-winning project featured a promotional website, video, marketing materials, and product mockups presented in a national showcase environment. Now to Southwestern City Schools' staff achievements. Congratulations to Ms. Carrie Clevidence of Darby Woods Elementary. Is Carrie here? Who was recently named the 2025 Elementary Educator of the Year by the Columbus Symphony Orchestra. Each year, the Columbus Symphony celebrates and recognizes outstanding music educators at the elementary, secondary, and private community levels. She was recognized as the sole recipient of this year's award at the elementary level. Great job, Carrie. Congratulations goes to the Southwest, the Southwestern City Schools' transportation team of Ian Cormack, Laura Price, Alex Merton, and Pam Gilli for earning third place at this year's School Bus Driver Rodeo. Ten district drivers participated in the annual statewide competition, which tests school bus drivers on their knowledge and behind-the-wheel skills. So if you see that team, please make sure you thank those bus drivers for all their great work and for winning third place. And congratulations to Darby Woods Elementary School Principal, Mr. Brian Novar. I don't think Mr. Novar's here, but I sent him a little message, who has been named the 2025 recipient of the YMCA of Central Ohio's Educator Impact Award. This award honors a Central Ohio principal who has demonstrated a lasting commitment to education and youth development, including strong support for YMCA before and after-school programs that help students thrive in and out of the classroom. Way to go, Mr. Novar. And Southwestern City Schools' Give Back. Grove City High School Student Council members recently volunteered at the Ronald McDonald House at the end of April, where they prepared, cooked, and served dinner for approximately ninety guests. In addition to serving meals, students toured the facility and learned more about the families supported by Ronald McDonald House. Great job, Greyhounds. That is it for me.
Thank you so much. Moving on now for Items for Action in our Fiscal and Operational Management with Mrs. Peterson.
All right, let's talk money. I have several items to bring forward. First, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised Permanent Appropriations, CX-1. Item number two, investments and financial statements for April 2025. You're going to see X-2 and X-3. It is recommended that in accordance with Section 135.14 of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education approve April investments and cash position reports for the month of April 2025 as submitted. Item number three is payment of bills, CX-4. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of April 2025. Item number four is donations, CX-5. Total donations of seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Again, continued appreciation, gratitude, and our thankfulness to our continued donations that come in and our donors who support our school district and our community. Item number five, authorization to pay bills in accordance with Section 5705.41, Ohio Revised Code, CX-6. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay bills for April, which were not processed in accordance with Section 5705.41, Ohio Revised Code. Item number six is to approve student activity purpose clauses and establish fund, fun/special cost centers. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the new revised student activity purpose clauses and to create the fund/special cost centers as presented in X-7. Here's a little background on this one, okay? These student funds for each high school are set up every year for the class, so now we're planning for the class of 2029. Go ahead, four years ahead, for the incoming freshman class to account for their class activities from their freshman to senior years, okay? The HVAC student fee account fund/special cost center is being created to account for the fees that is associated with the new HVAC program at the Career Academy. The severance fund/special cost center, that's being created to set aside funds to smooth out the spikes that is created when large groups of employees retire and receive their severance pay, payments. Funds can be transferred from the general fund into a severance fund on a consistent basis in preparation for future severance payments that will be paid from the severance fund, okay? The Capital Projects Fund, that special cost center is being created to set aside funds for a potential Ohio facilities construction commission project that will replace Grove City and Westland High Schools and improvements at Central Crossing and Franklin Heights High School. Roughly eighty-five, you see me getting stopped with all my zeros? Does that look like too many? Eighty-five thousand dollars have been identified as locally funded initiatives related to this project for items the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission does not fund, including but not limited to, this is something I'm sure we all commonly have heard when we talk about new buildings, okay? Athletic facilities, auditoriums, the difference between what the OFCC estimates and funds for inflation and what they actually cost, okay? So that is what that category means.
It's eighty-five million, not eighty-five.
You see me like, okay, it's a whole bunch of zeros, and I was like, my font and print, I keep doing it.
We can't get an auditorium for eighty-five.
And I was like, I think there's more zeros in there, and, you know, I'm like in my progressive lens trying to raise it up. I was like, I don't think that's right. Item number seven, approval of payment in lieu of transportation, okay? It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the payment in lieu of transportation list for the 2024-2025 school year as presented. This is CX-8. According to Sections 3227.01 of the Ohio Revised Code, the average cost of transportation per child in the state of Ohio for the 2024-2025 school year has been determined by the State Department of Education in the amount of five hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Here's background on this one. Each year, the district must approve payments to residents to transport their child to school because the district can provide transportation in what's considered a reasonable manner and has found it maybe impractical to do so. The state of Ohio sets standards on what is determined as impractical and also sets the rate at which parents will be reimbursed for providing transportation for their students. None of these students attend in our buildings. All of them attend either a private or community school or, I can't even get the word out, parochial-type school. We do provide transportation to some of these private schools and community schools. However, it is impractical to do so for these students. The rate last year was five hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-three cents per student. This year, that rate slightly decreased. We have about one hundred and fourteen students that is participating in the payment in lieu this school year. So one big thing I learned, because I was thinking when you pass these for a kid, like to do the payment in lieu, soon as the parent agrees, we are going to pay them, they don't get paid to the end of the school year. So even though you're approving them in the beginning of a school, you know, beginning of a school year, they do not receive payment till the end of that school year. Item number eight, approval of students deemed impractical to transport. You're hearing me say this again, because now we're talking about the upcoming school year, 2025, 2026, okay? It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the list of students deemed impractical to transport for the 2025-2026 school year as presented, CX-9. According to Section 32207, the Ohio Revised Code, the average cost of transportation per child in the state of Ohio for the 2025-2026 school year will be determined by the State Department of Education and workforce. So background on this one, each year, what I just explained, the district must evaluate the routes for the upcoming school year to determine if the district can provide transportation in a reasonable manner. In some cases, the district will find it impractical to do so. The state of Ohio sets the standards, saying it again, what is determined as impractical, and they also set the rate at. and they also set the rate at which the parents will be reimbursed for the providing the transportation for their students. The rate for the 2025-2026 school year, it has not been calculated yet by the state of Ohio at this time. Go figure. None of the students in the attached list attend our buildings as stated before. We provide their transportation to them, but we have to approve them now and then when we go forward, this will come about, okay? Item number nine, appointment of the Ohio School Boards Association, OSBA, Board of Trustees. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Denise D'Angelo Steele to the OSBA Board of Trustees for the 2025 calendar year. Item number 10, approval of the five-year forecast. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the five-year forecast as presented, CX-10. And the background on this one is the five-year forecast is gonna be presented twice a year, Hugh kinda just said that, at a minimum in November and May. The May five-year forecast is just an update for the current fiscal year based on activity throughout the year, and it includes any significant changes that's made during the fiscal year. Examples of those significant changes, as Hugh has said, from the original November forecast could include, but would not be limited to, the collective bargaining agreements, major changes in the state fund, loss of large taxpayer. That is all, Hugh. I think I hit it all. It was a good meeting. I think I covered it all, besides my visioning of all the numbers. After presenting this report, I move it for passage.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Liskinny.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskinny. Roll call. Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinny.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Boso.
Yes. Moving on now for items for action under policy with Ms. Denise D'Angelo Steele.
Thank you, Mr. Boso. And yes, the policy items, we have 29 policies that are second and final reading and kind of want to piggyback off of what Ms. Peterson was saying. Dr. Jamie Lusher, at the last meeting, did a wonderful job explaining a lot of these policies and how they come about and why we have them. And just like Ms. Peterson was saying, with finances and a lot of these areas, like promo payment in lieu for transportation, it follows Ohio Revised Codes in different sections and everything. And each of these policies that we have on here right now all follow an Ohio Revised Code. So whenever there's, you know, a question as to why is this happening, what's going on, there's a great reference on the policies to look at the Ohio Revised Code that coincides with the policies that we need to do by law. So when it comes to policies, when it comes to finances, when it comes to how the board operates, it's within the law there. So again, so we have 29 policies. We have four second final readings of our new policies. We have one for our renumbered policy and what is that? A few more there in the deleted ones and rescinded ones and 11 more in the revised policies. So after presenting, does anybody have any questions about any of these?
I do, yeah. So I just had a question. I'm not on the policy committee, so I was just curious as to what the rationale was for rescinding the school board legislative program.
Yeah, and we talked about this one too in the policy committee. And that is because it is... Oh, we spent like, we went over this in policy committee. It was, it's because that it's already set forth and we don't, by law, we don't need to have a set designated person to be legislative liaison. We as a board can choose that, and we have already. You know, I'm one, Chris is one, and you're our backup also. So it's one of those things that it, there's not a law to back up that we have to have that. So in going through the policies, we're trying to clean some things up and make it more precise. But I know Dr. Jamie Lusher is like, oh, Denise, I got this.
Kelly, that's a great question. Thank you for raising it. So it was actually a direct recommendation from Neola, who we partner with, because at one time when the language was current, you actually went like person to place to an actual delegation. The work has now changed, which gives access to all board members to actually serve in that role as a legislative liaison at any time so that you can foster that two-way communication and have an impact. So it was a direct recommendation from Neola.
Right, and it made it more open. So like instead of saying, oh, hey, you know, Denise is the one that has to go here because that's what we voted upon, now it's like, hey, you know, I can't go, I can't make it. Like now Kelly can go and do it instead. So yes, it was one of those Neola cleanup ones. That was a really long policy committee meeting two months ago, so thank you for that one.
What a bad time to pull any legislative liaison.
Right, right. But that was a good one, yeah. No, good question. Like that, and again, some of the policies, again, Neola was who were used for our policies and they're constantly going through everything. Twice a year, they send us a drop of, hey, you could do this, or hey, you can take these ones away and kind of evaluate those when they come up.
Thank you.
So, yes. Okay, any more questions? Okay, then it is recommended that, I recommend these all for approval.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second?
Second, Liskinny.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskinny. Can I get a roll call, please? Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinny.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Boso.
Yes. Moving on now to items for action under curriculum with Mrs. Liskinny.
Thank you, President Boso. This evening, under curriculum, it is requested that the Board of Education approve the first reading of the math materials adoption, grades 7 through 12, as attached. And I don't know if they're gonna pull that up, but it is, just a little bit of background on this. This has been a thoughtful two-year process. Thank you, Sarah Weber and her team. They do an amazing job and I got to be a part of some of that process and it was great to spend a day with the teachers and just how they look at the math curriculum and what's important to them and their students. So it's been a two-year process led by a teacher committee that reviewed, piloted, and ultimately selected materials for purchase. So we're looking at the Amplify Desmos Math for fifth and sixth, Compacted Math, Seventh Accelerated Math, Seventh and Eighth Grade Math, Applied Algebra, Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II, Financial Algebra with Sun Gage, Statistics and Probability from BFW, Trigonometry Pearson, Pre-Calculus Pearson, AP Calculus, AB and BC, which I have no idea what that is. AB and BC, I'm not calculus savvy. And that's Savas and Pearson, and then AP Statistics with BFW. These do come with digital supplemental programs, the Delta Math, 6th through high school, the high school Alex, and the AP Calculus and Statistics as well. So after reviewing this, I move this for approval. And if approved this evening for this first reading, these materials will be open to the public for the next month until the June meeting, when we'll be voting at that time. So please don't hesitate to come to the DSC and look at those materials.
I have a question for you. I'm about to ask. So would we just show up at the DSC if we want to look at them? Is that the best way to do it? Do we email or call somebody? How do we go about?
You can call the front desk. On the website tomorrow, there'll be information posted on how to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second on that motion?
I'll second. D'Angelo Steele.
Thank you very much. Can I get a roll call, please? Ms. Liskinny.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Boso.
Yes. We're gonna go back to Mrs. Peterson for Facilities Development.
Facilities. Almost forgot. Okay, facilities. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the resolution as presented to reject the bids and use private sale for disposition of properties at 1062 School Street, Pleasant Township, Ohio, and 1122 North Hague Avenue in Franklin Township, Ohio. Little background on these two is these were properties that we had buildings on prior to our new buildings being built. Those buildings are gone, it's just land, if you noticed. So we are in the process of wanting to sell this land because we can't do anything with it. It's small in size and it's not anything that would be able, we would build something on for the size of our district. It served its purpose, so to speak. And so we are going to make a motion, I am making a motion, to reject the bids that came in because we would like to go the private sale route so that we ensure we get the value that we are entitled. Don't like saying entitled, but you know, that's how the market is rolling, that we are entitled and think we should get for those properties. So I move this for a motion, make a motion for this to be passed.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a roll call? Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinny.
Yes.
Mr. Boso.
Yes. Moving back to Ms. Liskinny with items for action for schools, students and community.
Thank you, President Boso. This evening, under students, school, and community, we have four action items. The first one is Central Crossing High School Cross Country, student athletes to travel, they have the opportunity to travel and attend the cross-country summer camp at Geneva Hills in Lancaster, Ohio. The trip will be held July 13 through the 16th, 2025, and students will miss zero days of school. Trip expenses will be paid by students, parents, and fundraising. Number two is Grove City High School Marching Band students to travel to Millersburg, Ohio for band camp at the Skyview Ranch. The trip is planned for August 3rd through the 8th, 2025, and students will miss zero days of school. The trip expenses will be paid by students, parents, and fundraising. Number three is Grove City High School Student Council. They have the opportunity to participate in the Ohio Association of Student Leaders Summer Workshop at the Ohio State University's campus. The trip is planned for June 22nd through the 26th, 2025, and students will miss zero days of school. Trip expenses will be paid by student council and families. And number four, the NJROTC cadets from Central Crossing, Franklin Heights, and Grove City High Schools have the opportunity to train in basic military skills and instill desired leadership qualities at Camp Attarberry in Edinburg, Indiana. The trip is planned for June 22nd through the 27th, 2025, and of course, students will miss zero days of school. And I believe, I don't have it on here, hold on one second. Oh, there it is. Trip expenses will be paid by NJROTC units, students, parents, and fundraising. After reviewing these items, I move them for approval.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second. Martindale's got it.
Who's got it? Oh. Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Can I get a roll call, please? Ms. Liskinny.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Boso.
Yes. Now going on for items for action on our personnel with Mrs. Martindale.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. For tonight's board meeting, we have eight personnel items involving 929 persons. This includes 33 certificated resignations, one administrative employment, 10 certificated changes in employment, 223 certificated employments, 146 of those are supplementals, 12 classified resignations, nine classified changes in employment, and 29 classified employments. And having reviewed all of these, I'm very excited to welcome all this new staff. I move this item for action.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second on that?
Second, Liskinny.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskinny. Roll call. Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinny.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Boso.
Yes. Moving on now to public participation.
Hang on one second. We have, we've got Matts here to make it.
Sorry, Matt. My bad. It's not on here.
Well, I know. It's part of our new onboarding process to bring in new administrators to be at the longest board meeting with the most engaged. Yeah, I'd like to welcome Mr. Larry Riker as our new Assistant Principal at Franklin Heights High School. It's my pleasure to introduce him. He comes to us from New Albany, local schools, where he has served as a high school wellness teacher, department chair, and head wrestling coach. He's also worked with Licking Heights Local School District and North Folk Local Schools. He holds a Bachelor of Arts in Health, Physical Education for Capital University, and Master's of Arts in Educational Leadership for Concordia University of Chicago. He has experience in both teaching and in his classic athletics. Mr. Riker brings a wealth of knowledge in classroom management, team leadership, and athletic program development, score of more than a decade of head coaching experience. His extensive background in sports management, plan development, curriculum development, and financial stewardship will make him a valuable asset for Franklin Heights High School community. Larry is no nonsense. He's driven, he's honest, hardworking, caring, and supportive of his staff and students. He has a huge heart and cares greatly about people. I'm confident you will find Larry to be a tremendous resource and dedicated partner in supporting our Golden Falcons. So Larry, come on up, please.
So after all that, just thank you very much, this great opportunity to be here and join this team of so many people that care about all their kids. And it's really cool. My junior college experience, I was in Franklin Heights, and now I'm gonna be joining that staff, so I'm very excited to be back in the building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. All right, now we're going to the public participation related to non-agenda items, and our first speaker will be Rachel Parcell, or Parsley, I'm sorry.
President Boso, Vice President Steele, and board members, as well as Superintendent Banks and Treasurer Guardside, and all the Southwestern City Schools District staff. My name is Rochelle Parsley, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to advocate on behalf of my son Gabriel Parsley in regards to requesting permission that he be permitted to participate as a player in the newly formed Grove City High School lacrosse team. As this sport is new to Southwestern City Schools District, is definitely not new to Gabriel or myself and family. Gabriel has been a member of the Grove City Lacrosse Club team for 10 of its 11 years as a long-pull defender. He has been a varsity player since his freshman year in heavy rotation, a starter his sophomore and junior years, and was voted by his teammates as a captain as a junior. He was given the honor and responsibility to manage and coach the defense. Gabriel has received three confirmed official college offers and is actively communicating with six additional colleges who are continuing to watch his play and skill set for potential official offers. He is a skilled and passionate lacrosse player and athlete. Gabriel takes a heavy school load with many weighted AP classes and has a 3.4 GPA, receives many compliments from his teachers about his great attitude, class participation, and position as a leader at a school. Our family does not live in the Southwestern City Schools District. The district that we reside in does not offer lacrosse, and the reason why he participated in the Grove City Lacrosse Club, excuse me. Gabriel is a rising senior. As exciting as it is that the district has approved lacrosse to be a school offered sport, I know that there are some very excited athletes and families about this new opportunity. However, it isn't quite as exciting for us because Gabriel could lose out on his opportunity to play lacrosse this senior year. Gabriel has definitely played an active role in building the program and creating the reputation that the club has a competitive team. I understand that if you grant Gabriel permission, that that could open the door for others to ask for permission as well. And being aware of this, I wanted to share with you that there are five high school players in total that play on the team that do not reside in this school district and that their school district does not offer lacrosse. There are two rising seniors to include Gabriel and three rising juniors. I find that offering a potential solution is always helpful, and my offering is that there could be a one-time permission of players currently on the team that do not attend the Southwestern City Schools District to finish out their high school careers in lacrosse. So in closing, I'm requesting that the Southwestern City Schools Board, District Board of Education give serious consideration to giving Gabriel permission to play lacrosse at Grove City High School for the spring 2026 season. Thank you for your time this evening and the opportunity to address you about my son and what matters to him.
Thank you, Rachel. We'll get back with you.
Hi, thank you for letting us speak. I just wanted to talk about what lacrosse means to me. I feel like... I feel like if you talk to any of my close friends or family, they'll say that lacrosse is the reason why I can't hang out on the weekends, the reason why I am going to the gym as much as I can. It's the motivation of what I do in my life. It's the reason I turn my schoolwork in. I mean, anything I do, I always think of, how would this affect me on the field? Obviously, my goal is to use lacrosse to get me into a college that I can attend to play on the team. Sorry. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, bud. Mom, he was a good boy there, I could tell. Moving on now, Josh Burton, this time, with partnership with the NSBLC.
Thank you for allowing my earlier blunder. My name is Josh Burton. Thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I'm going to try to read this quickly, so bear with me. I do have children in the district. I'm not a researcher, a data scientist or a PhD. That said, I have professional experience in related fields. I'm here to talk today about the Southwestern City School Board's choice to partner with the NSBLC. The main point of my talk today is to talk about confirmation bias. That is, the tendency to interpret new evidence as confirmation of one's existing beliefs or theories. Okay? The tendency to interpret new evidence as confirmation of one's existing beliefs or theories. So let's explore that for a moment. In a scientific or academic sense, that might mean designing studies in a poor manner to inadvertently support your own preconceived notions. Okay, you want to know how many people speak English in a district? So you count them all up. You include folks who speak more than one language, including English. You include people who only speak English. So we're only going to do English. It's just, it's a poor example, but it's an example of choosing the data you want to support your cause that you've already chosen. At its most extreme, it's the inability or unwillingness to see another potentially equally valid part of the story. The NSBLC claims that research suggests parental guidance of education produces best outcomes. Okay, that's a fine claim, but they don't quote what research that claim is based on. You have to get halfway to the end of the internet to even understand who runs this organization. And to find out, some of these folks are referred to as doctor while not really stating where they got their doctorate or what it's in, any of that. We all know by now that this organization supports segregation of classrooms for our developmentally delayed and neurodiverse students. There is supposedly well-documented literature to support better outcomes for all students in integrated classrooms, yet the NSBLC chooses to ignore this. I ask why? Why choose one and ignore the other? This claim to follow research on one subject and then blatantly ignore it in adjacent subjects is the Habsburg jaw of tells. It's a tell. Not that these folks aren't smart enough to do the real work, they clearly are. So therefore, it's a tell that they are cherry-picking the literature and therefore intentionally engaging in basic scientific illiteracy. Now, I'm not sure if our shadow board member is here tonight, but unfortunately, I'm not aware of any law that says you must truly consider all sides before making a ruling or judgment. Rather, these are ethical principles that are left to debate. Unfortunately, in some cases, this leaves these debates in hands of those whose motivations are driven more by money or personal success than by the truth or improved equitable outcomes. Yes, I said equitable. So in the end, I invite you to consider the facts by painting a mental image. Joining forces with an organization so blatantly motivated by non-science puts this board in a corner. Above your heads on the left, there's a sign that says negligence. Above your heads on the right is a sign that says ignorance. And it's your choice which label you choose to represent your cause. Or there's a third choice, and you can take any number of paths to walk out into the middle of the room and join the rest of us. In closing, you can't make this problem go away simply by saying you wish to have diversity of opinion. It's like, it's like you want to learn how to fly a plane and then you ask someone who's good at video games to teach you how. You don't go, it's the best evidence you want, not all the evidence. Am I, am I wrong? And by the way, this is terrifying. A hundred, what, teachers, something? So, anyway, sorry. You mentioned noise and hysteria. That's, that's kind of a pretentious thing to say. We are the noise and hysteria. We are the opinions. It seems to me that some of these actions are taken in consideration of future ambitions and not the current state and needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Next up is Julie Twilly, learning disabled, disabled education.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak at tonight's meeting. My name is Julie Twilly, and I am the proud parent of two children that attend Richard Avenue Elementary School. One of my children has both a 504 plan and an IEP. He excels academically, but at times he needs additional support. This is where these plans have come into play and become essential. We were fortunate that his kindergarten teacher and principal at the time were proactive in identifying his needs early on and putting the supports in place to help him thrive. I want to take a moment to highlight the peer model program in our district. This program encourages children to learn from one another and supports development in key areas such as communication, cognition, social interaction and emotional growth, motor skills and adaptive functioning. Programs like these reflect the district's commitment to valuing all our children, including those with diverse needs, and to fostering inclusive environments rather than segregated ones. This is why I feel compelled to express my deep concern regarding the school board's recent alignment with the National School Board's Leadership Council. This council's vision statement specifically references students with learning disabilities, mental handicaps and special needs in a way that is so troubling. It states, "Students who are learning-challenged can consume a lot of teachers' times and resources. This means less time for students that are not learning-challenged. This fact provides less than an ideal outcome for both the learning-challenged and those who are not learning-challenged. By providing specialty teachers and exclusive classes and schools for the learning-challenged, we open up the path to success for both groups." I challenge this perspective. It does not open the path to success. It opens the door to segregation and a diminished tolerance for differences. Richard Avenue Elementary already has special education classrooms that serve students needing additional support. Importantly, many of these students also participate in general education classrooms for part of the day. They're able to be mainstreamed with their peers. This integration benefits all of our students. As our children grow into adults, they will live and work in a world filled with individuals of varying abilities. They need to learn acceptance and cooperation, not division. I think I speak for most of the parents in this room when I say, I want to raise a child that's not only smart, but is accepting of other people. I fear that isolating students who are not neurotypical may lead to reduced empathy, greater misunderstanding, and ultimately, a less safe and inclusive school environment for everyone. Segregation is not the key to a successful education. Inclusion is. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you, Julie. Next, we'll go to Emily Hardy with special education and English learners.
Good evening. My name is Emily Harding, and I'm a 7th grade language arts teacher at Finland Middle School. And I'm here to proudly speak on behalf of the 1,633 members of the Southwestern Education Association. I come from a proud tradition of public service. My father and brother are both firefighters in Columbus, and my grandfather served as a Franklin County Sheriff's Deputy as well as the School Resource Officer in Franklin Heights in the early 80s. He later became the longest-serving sheriff in Franklin County history. My sister-in-law works as a paraprofessional helping support students with special needs as she works towards getting her degree to be a teacher. My mother, a lifelong public school teacher, has also dedicated her career to serving others. Growing up in this environment, I learned that public service is more than a profession. It's a responsibility and a privilege. That belief is at the heart of everything I do. Supporting and advocating for all of my students is not just part of my job, it's a duty I hold with great care and purpose. In the public district of Southwestern City Schools, our student population of approximately 21,000 is richly diverse. Around 20% of our students identify as Hispanic or Latino, 17.2% as Black or African-American, 7.4% as multiracial, and roughly 3% as Asian or Asian Pacific Islander. Altogether, nearly half of our students identify as race or ethnicities other than white. Our district is home to more than 3,800 students who are learning English as a second language, speaking 78 languages between them, reflecting the vibrant diversity within our school. Based on our Ohio School Report Card, our district services 4,356 students with disabilities. That is 20% of our student population. At our most recent school board meeting, Ms. D'Angelo Steele made a motion for the district to join the National School Board Leadership Council, otherwise known as the NSBLC. Ms. Liskinney noted that she has previously participated in training sessions with the organization. Ultimately, four of our public, public school board members voted in favor of joining the NSBLC while Ms. Peterson abstained. After reviewing the NSBLC's publicly-available materials, I was deeply concerned that our public school board has aligned itself with an organization that ultimately wants to weaken our public schools. Instead of nurturing collaboration, our board is using taxpayer money to pay for a membership in extremist organization focused on manufacturing controversies, draining resources from our public schools and driving wedges between educators and community members, all for a political gain. For example, the NSBLC claims that students with learning challenges can consume a lot of teachers' time and resources, suggesting this detracts from students without such challenges. Their solution? To create exclusive classes in schools for the learning challenge. Research shows that providing support to students in a general education setting benefiting, benefits all students when appropriate staffing and support are provided. There are certainly some students that will need a smaller classroom with more intensive support in order to thrive, but suggesting a separate classroom for the many students that can access the curriculum in the general education classroom just because they need extra support is appalling. All students deserve to be educated in their least restrictive environment based on their individual needs. They also assert that our public education system is overwhelmed by mandate forcing them to teach its curriculum in multiple languages and describe non-English-speaking students as an unacceptable cost. Education is the key and the promise, America's promise, to a better tomorrow. To deny English language learners equal opportunity and access to a quality education is to slam the door on their future. We know based on research, our students can benefit both socially and academically by learning another language. Research has found that people who are multilingual may be better at analytical tasks like synthesizing information or understanding processes. Multitasking and paying attention are two skills that can be hard for students to master. Learning a new language can help our students do both well. It is incredibly disappointing and frankly alarming that our public school board would choose to align with an organization that openly undermines and stigmatizes the very students we are entrusted to support. These views stand in stark contrast to the values of equity, inclusion and dignity. That should give, that should guide public education, especially in a district where nearly 68% of our student population could be negatively affected by such rhetoric. All 1,633 members of the Southwestern Education Association call on all five members of our school board to focus on the real issue facing our schools, our students and our community, like ensuring fair school funding so that every student can thrive and the appropriate staffing and supports can be provided. Oh, and I'll leave you with this. The NSBLC lists as one of its goals to spot and eliminate teacher activists within our schools. Well, here we are. And these, our school, will not rest until our students receive the support they need and the support that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on now, we have Joseph Harris on transparency.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Harris. That's a hard act to follow. My family and I, we moved to the district last summer, almost a year ago. I have three children. We are all learning-challenged, as the NSBLC so offensively puts it. I am going to try to stick to my outline. All the elected board members, when they were campaigning, repeatedly mentioned how important transparency was to them, and they promised that they would be transparent and promote transparency during their time on the board. I had quotes from everybody, but decided for the sake of brevity, I would cut them. And anyone, if you forgot what you said, you can Google your own name and transparency, and you'll find many hits. One actually promised that there would be regular town hall meetings. We just got here, so if those have been happening, no one told me. So I have a couple of visual aids that my child, Kit here, pronouns are they/them. They're an 8th grader at Norton Middle School. Now, the board already knows this information, so Kit's going to hold it up so you all can see it. Executive sessions or secret meetings. They went from an average of 6 hours and 7 minutes a year to almost 40 hours in 2024, very suddenly. Hold it up. 2024, okay? At the beginning of 2024, there were, now granted, I understand there was a search for a new superintendent last year, which had something to do with wearing masks and kitty litter, I guess. I really don't understand what that was about. At the current pace this year, the board is on track to have 25 hours and 41 minutes of secret meetings by December. So what changed at the beginning of 2024? There was a new board president that assumed office at that time. There was a certain attorney that was almost immediately engaged. And that attorney told the Board of Education at Big Walnut that the main value of lawyers provide is being able to give attorney-client privilege, and that can really help guide a board without being in the public sphere. Because that's the whole point of attorney-client privilege. Now, the reason that I'm speaking about transparency and not about the NSBLC, which everyone else wanted to talk about, is that I reached out the day after that board meeting to the board members asking for a comment about the very troubling things that were said on the Our Vision page of the NSBLC's website. After several days of getting no response from anybody, I sent another email, and then I got two phone calls from one board member because I put my phone number in my email signature. And I got an email from another board member asking to have a phone call, and I got another email that was lengthy but really didn't say much. What I wanted to know was whether the members of the board that voted to join this organization were aligned with this organization's stated vision, particularly regarding the segregation of special needs students. As I myself, being a special needs student, I'm sorry, learning challenged, before IDEA, was kept in a segregated special education classroom for several years in elementary school and middle school, which resulted in me graduating second from the bottom of my class as a senior. I have the emails here. When they go for their secret meeting after they're done, then anyone that wants to read them, they're right here. them, they're right here. And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Kelly Dillon on Board of Education meetings, how they're run.
Thank you for the superintendent and board for allowing time and space for the public to comment. During board meetings like this one, public participation is not just crucial, but necessary in order to hold our board accountable and the public informed. I signed up to speak about how decisions are made by this board. Typically, boards like ours, I'm going to say board and rules a lot. Boards like ours follow Robert's Rules of Order. I make this assumption that this board follows Robert's rules because of how every meeting so far, including this one, has run. Approval, seconds, votes on, agendas, votes, moving into executive session, for example. Robert's Rules of Order dictate any discussions are to be opened and closed by first, second, and then the majority. At the last school board meeting, an approved agenda item opened the meeting to discussion regarding participation or membership in different board organizations. I am not here to discuss the outcome of that discussion. At no point was the discussion officially closed. At no point was a vote to adopt any recommendations suggested, seconded, or voted on. Out of order, you took an item for discussion and put it up as an item for policy. So what? Items for discussion are not just for discussion amongst the five of you. You need to come back to the district, your constituents, and discuss memberships in organizations like this. Have those critical conversations you want to have on the record. Not just those who elected you, which a few of you have said on more than one occasion. You sit on the dais representing our whole district, not just those who chose to vote for you. Policies get a first and second reading. This is so the public has access to these policies, the language, the ramifications, have time to contact you with questions, have time to publicly participate, to basically enjoy the transparency of that process. This was not done in regard to the organizations our district, with our money, chose to join or leave. There were no town halls that we were promised, there were no written responses to inquiries. The president of this board suggested a separate motion for each of the organizations. According to Robert's Rules of Order, this was out of order. I recognize public participation is not a chance for a dialogue with the board, so my following questions are rhetorical in nature, and for the record, and hopefully for you to consider in future actions. Why the rush? Why not have an actual discussion with your constituents? Why not close discussion on the item and then have a vote just two weeks later on an actual item? We were promised transparency. The means through which this decision was made was not transparent, was not communicative, and at a minimum, not according to the rules through which you run your meetings. We deserve better, and I hope in the future, items for discussion remain for discussion until they are actually brought up, seconded, and voted for. Thank you.
Moving on now for items for discussion, does anybody have any items for discussion?
I was going to bring up a little bit, I've been speaking with Mr. Bobo from OSBA and everything, and I was hoping to get everybody more involved with everything. You know, last year, I went to a lot of meetings, and I attended a lot of, you know, kind of continuing ed classes, like School Board 101, and Central Committee Meetings, and all of these things. Every, every month, there's at least a meeting or two that you can be a part of, and webinars and everything, so I kind of wanted to piggyback off of, since we had the OSBA trustee part on there today, piggyback off of that, what Mrs. Peterson had. And, you know, I will have, probably Mr. Banks can share the website that Mr. Bobo shared with me, so that everybody can go on there and see, there's a list of different committee positions you can have, OSHA legislator position, board member cabinet, you can do student liaison person. So anyway, for any other board member who doesn't have a role necessarily on OSBA, there's a lot of opportunities to become an active role. One coming up here in July, August, is the delegate position. I know I did that last year also, but after doing it this year, I realized it's, it'd be really great to have somebody else do that one with me, or someone else do that role. I was at the convention every single day for at least eight to 10 hours every day to meet all of the duty requirements that I had, so, which is fine, I did it, but I want to share that experience with everybody else. So, again, I don't mind doing it, but if somebody else can do it, I think that'd be a great opportunity for them, too. So we'll bring that up. I think Garseide, that's on the July, August one, yeah, because that's a time when they also bring out the conversations that OSBA likes to talk about in November, so. But that was, again, there's awesome websites, links, their website is, it's kind of confusing, but once you figure it out, there's a lot of information on there, so I wanted to share that.
Thank you. Moving on now to, we're going to go into executive session, it's recommended the Board of Education adjourn the executive session according with policy 0166 to prepare for conduct or review of negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees, and to consider the employment dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of public employees. You are more than welcome to stay, I don't know how long we'll be back there, but there's no other items on the agenda after our executive session. Thank you for being here.